Ten stories higher. I'll get to the other.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 3, 2021, meeting of the Revere City Council. All rise and salute the flag, please.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Roll call of the members. Counselor Janino.
Here.
Here. Counselor Guanasso. Is here. Counselor Keefe?
Here.
Here. Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here. Counselor Morabito?
Here.
Here. Counselor Nowosowski?
Here.
Here. Counselor Powers?
Here.
Here. Counselor Rotundo?
Present.
Here. Counselor Serino?
Here.
Here. Counselor Visconti?
Here.
Here. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Here.
Here. Quorum is present. Approval of the meeting of the Journal of April, sorry, lost my calendar here, of April 26, 2021.
So move.
All in favor, all opposed? So move on.
Next up is the zoning subcommittee report.
Mr. Chairman Keefe.
Mr. President, we had three items before us this evening. All three were voted out unanimously, favorably, of course, and we can go down each one. I did want to point for the record on the 21-103, the 727 Revere Beach Parkway. We recognized on the conditions they were contradicting from site plan review and the plan that was submitted. We just needed to exclude, we had to modify the parking from, Madam Clerk, would you read where the parking conditions were?
Sure. So the updated condition shall be, no driveway access or egress or service entrance shall be allowed on Taff Street other than the four exterior parking spaces adjacent to Taff Street as shown on the plan.
And that was, just, we wanted to make sure that that was into the record because the plans, I know that they were from prior, they didn't reflect that. We want to make sure that the future plans do reflect the parking conditions. And with that being said, all three of the items were favorable.
We'll take them up one at a time. Madam Clerk?
Now, this is on, I'm sorry, Council Order 21-101 on the application of 386 Squire Road. Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for 386 Squire Road, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review in the zoning subcommittee? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Voting yes, Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The special permit has been approved, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review in the zoning subcommittee. Next council order is 21-102 on the app, this is for a special permit for 1540 North Shore Road. Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for 1540 North Shore Road, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
This special permit application has been approved. Now for the final application for Robert Ionello, 727 Revere Beach Parkway. Shall the City Council grant the relief requested for 727 Revere Beach Parkway, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Voting yes. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Keefe?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowosowski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Serino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Visconti?
Yes.
Yes. And Counsel President Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. The special permit application has been approved. Next up is the appointment subcommittee report.
Chairman Guanasso.
Mr. President, with all due respect to those people who applied for positions as licensed drain lands on the second event, an invitation by the city clerk to come to an appearance before the City Council, none of these people came. So on the 27, 17th of this month, when they finally have our appointment subcommittee again, if they do not appear, we're going to take the appropriate actions. So at this time, I ask that these be held over. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Clerk?
Calendar item number 10, communication from the mayor requesting a public hearing on a loan order in the amount of $6 million for Phase 12 construction, CWSRF Construction Project Number 6800. Calendar item number 11, communication from the mayor requesting a public hearing for a loan order in the amount of $1.5 million for Phase 3 investigations, CWSRF Planning Project Number 6805. Calendar item number 12, communication from the mayor requesting a public hearing for a loan order in the amount of $1.1 million for water system improvements. And calendar item number 13, communication from the mayor requesting an appropriation from the Community Improvement Trust Fund for public space improvements at 21 Revere Beach Boulevard. Is Don Charamella here?
Is anyone from the administration in attendance?
I see him on attendees.
Donny Charamella is on attendees.
Yes. This is Don Charamella, Chief of Infrastructure, the City of Revere, 215 Rice Avenue.
Welcome, Donny.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Zambudo.
So you want to talk about this a little bit, or?
Yes. Water system improvements. So as you, everybody's aware, we have a lot of disruptions with our water system because of the age of the infrastructure and deferred maintenance. And these monies are required for the, just for basically upsizing lines, six-inch lines that are existing in the street, which are well undersized for today's standards. These are lines that were installed back into the 20s and the 30s that are grossly undersized and inferior pipe, cast iron, is versed to what's available today, which is stock the line. And so I would like, you know, if this could, if we could get this appropriation.
Mr. President? Mr., Donny, if I can interrupt you, I think we've already sent those to public hearings. I think we're on the Community Improvement Trust for the 21 Revere Beach Boulevard? That's the item that's on the table right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Could you speak to that, please?
Yeah, well, these are also, these are also, these are also monies that we need for infrastructure in Ocean Avenue, stuff that we just, just weren't, weren't quite, you know, we're trying to do a lot in one, we're trying to do a lot in a short amount of time. And so these, as we're improving roads, we want to make sure that the infrastructure below, the asphalt, is someplace that we don't have to revisit anytime in the near future. We don't want to be digging up new, newly paved roads. So we're trying to make sure that the water lines, the drain lines, the sores are not really an issue because we've been lining them for the last nine or so years, and we have about almost 80% of our soil lines that are in great shape. But it's the water in the drain that we're basically working on at this time.
Thank you, Donny. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I was asked by the mayor and Bob O'Brien if I would give up my Community Investment Trust Fund for 21 Revere Beach Boulevard, so they could make improvements for the new restaurant around that whole, the whole building. And I agreed. So this is, this is part of the communication from the mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo?
Thank you. This is a multimillion-dollar developer, and we're giving them money to do this. That's also DCR property that we're talking about, Revere Beach Boulevard. They are now charging people $1.25 an hour, and we're going to pay for this? Where's the logic in that?
Counselor, really, I think you're straying from the, you know...
Well, no, I'm not, because that's part of the issue. This is 21 Revere Beach Boulevard is riding...
I'm sorry. I disagree. Thank you.
Well, I believe I still have my three minutes.
Thank you. I'll actually follow up with what my colleague was saying, because I was going to say something similar to, if there's any way DCR will help with some kind of the funding with, especially now that they're going to have, they're going to generate more funds with the meter. But with that said, Donny, you had mentioned Ocean Ave, so are they doing the backside as well of the building? Because...
Yeah, yes.
So what is the perimeter? So the whole, whole front of 21 Revere Beach and then the backside of Ocean Ave? Can you kind of give me the story?
Well, the back, the backside is, is Mass Works money. It's the, the front of the, of the building. So basically, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to, we're trying to make improvements to our infrastructure that are in their rope. So, I mean, it's, you know, it's our water line, it's our water line that is servicing our residents. It's our drainage or our saltwater that's going into our infrastructure.
Thank you for clearing that up, Donny. I appreciate that, because it was one of my questions that I was going to ask you, but now I don't have to ask it. Counselor Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Donny, I just have one question. You know, I think we're all very happy that we're getting a new restaurant in the city, commercial development. Is there, are they, who's, are they paying for a grease trap to go in there as part of that project?
Yes, they have.
Okay. That's all they wanted to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I'm looking at $295,000. We have to realize that technically, this is their money anyway, alongside the developers that are putting this into it. It's part of the Community Investment Trust Fund, and so they're just going through us to get it done. So I don't have a problem with this, and I think we ought to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I hear it's also part of a Mass Works grant. Okay, so Counselor Guanasso?
President, the first paragraph, first sentence states request for $295,000, and the second says a partial payment on public space. How much more is going to be required to update that, front of that building? That's $300,000. Do we have any answers for that?
Mr. Charamella, do you have any insight on that for us?
No, I'm sorry. I do not. No, I don't believe...
I'm assuming, Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, we're pretty vague about this thing, and we're talking $300,000 in here, and there's a lot of mystery involved, and a lot of us that are not on the end, don't know what this is about. And understandably, that they did commit to some of these funds when they were doing the project. But that's, you know, that's mitigated money that could be used elsewhere around the area. So it isn't just like a drop in the bucket, you say, it's $295,000, go do, go finish the project in the front. When someone, when a household is built, when a man builds a two-family or a single-family home, he has to pay for the sidewalk in front, part of his personal money. This is $300,000.
Right.
I'd like a little bit more detail in this, rather than just the two sentences of, here's $300,000 bucks and go for it.
Well, I think we all know where the money from the Community Improvement Trust Fund comes from, and I'm told that this particular thing is also part of a Mass Works grant.
See, you're told, but I'm not told.
Point to personal privilege.
So what you know, I don't know. That's what I'm talking about, Mr. President.
Okay, so...
So you're not told, so you've got it in your head.
No, no, no.
There are ten more of us that don't know what's been told to you.
Point to personal privilege.
State your point, Counselor.
As you earlier said that it wasn't relevant, what is relevant is that we need Frank Stringie, Nick Reistrum, and Mr. O'Brien here to answer these questions, because I am not ready to commit any funding from the City of Revere until I have a full explanation of what's going on. Thank you.
Thanks for your so-called point of personal privilege, but we'll, we'll let that one go. Counselor Serino?
Thank you, Mr. President. I understand Mr. O'Brien or Mr. Viskey aren't on tonight, but I would like to know, I understand that when a developer comes in and they build something like the Ryder, Redgate would have paid money into the CIT Fund, the Community Investment Trust Fund. I would like to know before we, before we were to vote on this, how much exactly Redgate put into the CIT Fund on this specific project. So I would tend to agree with Counselor Rotundo that I think we need some more people here to answer some questions before we make an educated decision. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Just so everybody understands, this will be going a ways and means, and we will get the answers that everybody's looking for. Counselor Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't want to throw any more flies in the ointment, but I did take exception. And again, this is, I know that we all agree as counselors and we respect each other. This isn't their money. This is the money that they, this is like the tax that they pay because we gave, they were granted special exemptions and variances, and that's part of, that's part of doing business. They saved money by some of the variances, and they paid into the CIT. So, I mean, certainly, yes, some of it absolutely should go into that area, but I think the council here is just looking for more detail when it comes to what, what areas and what part should we be paying for, and what part should they be paying for. When it says landscaping, is that up into the property? Is that the Revere City property? So I think there would just be more detail that we'd all like to see. So thank you, Counsel. Mr. President.
Thank, thank you, Counsel. We are going to get that detail, and now I'll call on the Chairman of Ways and Means, Jerry Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Glad to see that this is going into my committee. So I would like to know a little bit more about it before feeling comfortable about okaying $295,000. So I'll reserve my comments to Ways, when it's in the Ways and Means Committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I can just give you dibs and dabs. So what I got, this happened, this was asked of me in November, and I guess they were getting pushed back before the meters came from DCR. They were getting pushed back because they wanted to extend the sidewalk, and they wanted to have some of the restaurant outside, and DCR wouldn't pay for the sidewalk. They asked DCR. So that's where the funds, I think, are coming from. They're coming back to put in front of the Ryder, so they can create the sidewalk for the restaurant, which is going to be absolutely beautiful. But the restaurant's going to extend out from the sidewalk. But as you said, Counselor Visconti, you know, it will go in your committee, and we can talk about it even more. But I did agree on this, because, you know, they asked me, and they didn't have the money, and they asked me, and I said, sure, it's my ward, it's going back in my ward. Maybe it's not, you people feel that it's not appropriate, but we can talk about it, but this is what I know. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Guanasso, you get your hand up again. I think you want to speak again?
No, I didn't have my hand up again. I just didn't take it down.
Well, I'm seeing a hint. So obviously, this money's coming from the Community Improvement Trust Fund. We will discuss it in Ways and Means at the next meeting.
Calendar item number 14, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of utilizing funding from the American Rescue Plan to create a homeless shelter in Revere.
Counselor Rotundo?
Mr. President, obviously, I would like you to put this in committee, but I think it speaks for itself. We have a very specific need for shelter for many people within our community that unfortunately are homeless, and that is, you know, one of the biggest places that I champion, and I would like to see some of that money be utilized accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other counselors? Ways and Means? Ways and Means.
Counselor, item number 15, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of creating a health care trust fund to increase the city's resiliency against future pandemics.
Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we have many different trust funds for very different things within our community, I think this is probably more pressing considering what we, we looked at during COVID. And in fact, having a trust fund where you can put reserve money into a fund would, I think, benefit the community in the end, specifically considering that all the experts say that this could happen again. Again, if you could put it in committee, obviously, this is up to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Maravito.
Mr. President, if you can, if the city clerk can invite the city solicitor to that meeting as well, just to see if there's anything we have to do on our part, we may have to adopt a certain amendment to create a health, some kind, a health trust fund.
That's correct.
That's all.
Any other councilors? Seeing none. Ways and Means.
Counselor, item number 16, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the mayor be requested to investigate the feasibility of purchasing military surplus portable medical tents utilizing American Rescue Plan funds. These units can be used for emergency housing for Revere residents displaced from fire, natural disaster, and medical use such as treatment and quarantine capacities.
Speaks for itself.
Counselor Rotundo.
Speaks for itself.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Counselor, item number 17, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo that the city council, mayor, school committee, and the city of Revere denounce China for the genocide of the Uyghur people.
Counselor Rotundo. How many motions are we up to here?
I believe it's four.
Counselor.
You asked me last week to keep the rule, keep to the rules. You keeping me honest?
Just keeping you honest.
Listen, what is going on to the Uyghurs, the Muslim population in China is an atrocity. And to allow that to happen, to sit back and be silent is to be complicit. And I will not be complicit. And I'm only a lonely city councilor in the city of Revere. And these people are put in indoctrination camps. They're being fed pork. That's not what their religion, you know, permits. It is an abomination for what's going on there. And I would like the city as a whole to denounce it, considering that we have a very large Muslim population in our community. But more importantly, if, there's a saying that at first they came for the, you know, the gypsies, and then they came for the homeless, and then they came for the Jews. Anytime anybody does something of this nature, it has to be, has to be spoken up against. And I watched a documentary about it, and it just wrenched my heart, what they're doing to the children, to the parents. It's disgusting. And if you, we could also send a communication to the Human Rights Commission regarding this. Maybe they might want to write a resolution as well. But we need to denounce this across the board. Thank you.
Sounds like China's hacked us. I certainly, I certainly sympathize with your motion. I think it needs to be tailored to the city council. I don't think we can direct the school committee and others to do. So if you want to write a resolution that puts the city council on record as denouncing these evil individuals in China, communist Chinese, I'm happy to help with that. But I don't think we can speak for the school committee.
Well, that's why I would like to put it in committee and ask if we could jointly do it.
Certainly, we'll put it in your committee, Human Rights.
Thank you.
One-minute recess. I'm, I meant, I meant your Public Health Committee.
We know how reactive and proactive you are with this staff that you have. But we're a very, we're a big city. We just saw the census. The city grew, the state grew, what, 17%? Oh, the city grew 17%. We're a big city. We're going to have to have a few more people to help take care of what the city needs are. So I'd be 100% in support of this, Counsel McKenna. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel Guanasso.
Mr. President, this is probably the most important motion that can affect our community ever. Because all we, since I've been sitting on the Revere City Council for 32 years, I've been saying the same thing for 32 years, that there's an abusive population out there that decide that they're going to circumvent the law. And their law-abiding citizens living next door suffer the pains of it because they wouldn't do such a thing. By 12:15 on a Friday, out comes the saws, hammers, and whatever. Trucks pull up, construction starts, and they go right through the weekend, Sundays included. And I just find that's an affront on all of us. And as far as money, as this, as Counselor McKenna correctly said, this is self-driven revenue. We could get, in one weekend, we can cover the year's money for salaries and wages. We could put a couple of people, do a service to our community, help the law-abiding people who go by the law. You see these people coming from all over. And it just, it's just getting out of control. And we've allowed this to take place over all the few last mayors since before Kalala. And that's a long time ago. This has been going on. When, when the hell are we going to stop? When are we going to have the courage to say to these people, "Stop? This is not right. You're offending your neighbors. You're offending all of us." And the poor souls that sit and go by the book of the law just look in disgust. And they, and they think down of us. They don't really think highly of us because we're not doing our job. And it's so simple. And I'm so sick and tired. The building inspector telling me, "Call the police." The police aren't in force of that type of order. They have to get cited by the building department. The police don't want to get involved in this kind of stuff. And that, and that's been since day one. It's just an excuse. Building, every, building inspector after building inspector says the same thing, "Call the police." We know it isn't working. How many times we tell everybody, "It's not working." When can we help our neighbors that are doing the right thing? And stop the people who are violating the law every, every weekend? Every weekend, boom, bang, boom, bang. So they're doing major jobs. And here we go. We drive by it, and that guy, yeah, wish we could do something about it. We can do something about it. Let's create more help. Let's create people who want to enforce the law and put teeth into what we're saying and make something presentable for our community. And let people abide by the law. It's not a hard thing to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
I appreciate it. And thank you, Counsel McKenna, for a great motion. Thank, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Serrino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor McKenna, I want to commend you. I think this is a great motion. And I'm not going to ask to amend the motion, but I, I know Director Wells is watching. And I would even extend to say, not just weekends, maybe even part-time some evenings as well. Because I can tell you, I have an issue in Ward 6 where there's a home that trucks, heavy construction trucks, enter in and out of the property in the early mornings and late at night. And it's been like playing cat and mouse, trying to enforce the ordinance. Because when these trucks are coming and going from this residential property and disturbing the neighbors, the inspection services team are not out, out inspecting. So we've kind of, it's been a, it's been a huge issue. And I think having inspectors at night as well will help to deter some of these other issues that we're finding. And Counsel Guanasso is right. People, it's ridiculous that people just don't care. They, they're not abiding by our ordinances. And they need to be held accountable for the quality of life for all of us. So Counsel McKenna, I'm happy to support this motion. And Director Wells, if you're watching, please also feel free to add some nights into that part-time inspection.
Point of information, Mr. President?
State your point, Counselor.
It, it's not Inspector Wells. It's the building that's, building inspector who is in charge of construction.
Yes, Counsel, but...
Michael Wells doesn't have jurisdiction over there.
Mr. Wells is in charge of, is in charge of the whole department now. He is, he is in charge of the whole department.
I think, I think if you go and look at the ordinances like I know you do, Mr. President, and of certain little things, you'll see that says "building inspector."
Okay, but I, I believe...
Thank you.
I believe he falls under Mr. Wells now. But Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you. First and foremost, I always believe that the department heads, like with the issue of the traffic department, know what's best for their department. I will support Counselor McKenna on this. And I think that this has really more than just one component. Obviously, it has the component of enforcement, but it also has the component of service. When you have someone who is looking to get a permit on a weekend because either it was an emergency or what have you, you're able to do that. And more importantly, we're missing revenue on those processes. So I think, you know, besides having things online, I think more importantly, it would add a, a service factor within this process above and beyond the factor of enforcement, which clearly is a big issue. Because everybody knows. We see it time and time again throughout the city. You know, it gets dark on Friday night. Saturday morning comes and they're doing the vinyl siding. And the next day, they're gone. Or they're doing the roof. Or they're putting, you know, a porch in the back, or whatever it is. And listen, I'm not here to hit the, the average homeowner, but these contractors are the ones who, who, you know, need to pay the fee and so forth so that we can ensure that they're licensed, that they're insured, and that they have workman's comp so that our homeowners and residents are not affected by ill-practicing contractors. So I believe this has more than just one process. It's both the collection of revenue and it's also the enforcement of bad behavior. And I support it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I also want to commend Counselor McKenna. This is something that is long overdue and should be put on as quickly as possible. I would like to include two notations to that, if I may. First of all, that when people pull out a building permit, and there are a lot of people that take a permit, they throw it in the car, they throw it in the, in the house. They don't post it. I think that's the most important thing. One of the most important things is to post the permit. So when one of us, some other resident drives by and they, they see work going on and no permit posted, then it, you know, it brings a question to mind. So I think if they post the permit, that explains everything. And, and the other thing, if we are going to put someone or if the building inspector, zoning officer is going to put someone on that the city council is, I, I think we should be made aware of a number on the weekend, the phone number that you can call and contact whatever happens to be on duty that weekend. And rather than wait until Monday morning, have them, they're working, they're getting paid, go down and look at the violation and put a cease and desist. Because many times in the city, things have gotten done and then people are reluctant later on, the next week or the next weekend or something to, you know, enforce the zoning ordinances. And that creates a problem. Nobody wants to hurt anyone. Well, this way here, if somebody pulls a permit, they post it. It's there. If the inspector goes down, he's going down on a weekend and cease and desist, and that's it. Nobody's really getting hurt. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Maravito.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with all my colleagues and Counsel McKenna. This is something that is necessary. I think what happens is you have one, you'll have a resident who will do illegal building. And then before you know it, it sets a trend. And it's like a domino effect. The neighbor down the street's like, talks to him, talks to that resident, and it's like, oh, well, I just do it on the weekend. They don't enforce it. So I think it's very important and very necessary to set an example. And, and this, this is exactly what it will do. We'll set an example with enforcement by having that extra set of eyes responding to calls on the weekends if there is a complaint. So I commend my colleague for putting forth this motion once again.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I totally agree with the motion. I totally agree with everything that everybody said, especially Counsel Guanasso, how long he's been fighting this to happen, as I have. You know, it's, I see it down my ward all the time, even though a lot of the buildings come out nice. But they're doing it wrong. You see all this construction going on with no permits shown. If they have them, we don't know. So it's something that we have to get on. And I don't think it's going to happen next week. I think this isn't something we're going to see until after the new budget comes up. And I just hope that the mayor does put it in the budget and allows inspection services to put in a part-time inspector for weekends only. You know, and what Counselor Serrino said about construction materials, equipment being put on residential property. I've been fighting something like this for eight years and inspection services hasn't done anything about it. You know, I've been screaming, screaming. We've given it to our lawyer, nothing. We had no action at all. And all that equipment is still there. They start their trucks up at 7:00 in the morning, 6:30 in the morning, and they back out of the lot. And all you hear is beep, beep, beep. Who wants to hear that at 6:30 in the morning? I know, I don't. And I think that somebody ought to get off their horse and stop doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend my colleague Counselor McKenna for bringing this forth again, being persistent. It's great. I'm in favor of this. You know, it's, I see it down my ward all the time, even though a lot of the buildings come out nice, but they're doing it wrong. You see all this construction going on with no permits shown. If they have them, we don't know. So it's something that we have to get on, and I don't think it's gonna happen next week. I think this isn't something we're gonna see until after the new budget comes up. And, and I just hope that the mayor does put it in the budget and allows the inspectional services to put in a part-time inspector for weekends only. You know, and Counselor Serino said about construction materials, equipments being put on residential property. I've been fighting something like this for eight years, and the inspectional services hasn't done anything about it. You know, I've been screaming, screaming, we've given it to our lawyer, nothing. We got no action at all, and all that equipment is still there. They start their trucks up at seven o'clock in the morning, six-thirty in the morning, and they back out of the lot, and all you hear is beep, beep, beep. Who wants to hear that at six-thirty in the morning? I know, I don't. And I think that somebody ought to get off their horse and stop doing their job. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanna commend my colleague Counselor McKenna for bringing this forth again, being persistent. It's great. I'm in favor of this. I, I think, I also like to, the idea of my, my colleague Counselor Powers said as well that we as residents also need to know who to call and, and make those people, make the inspector aware of that, and take care of that right at the time during the weekends, because handling it on Monday is a day late, as far as I'm concerned. And I, I like that idea as well, and I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I certainly think this is a great motion by Counselor McKenna. I heard some good other suggestions, and I think we should forward them to the, to the head of inspectional services, Mike Wells. The, the fact that we should stress to the people that are getting a permit, whether they're a contractor or a homeowner, they need to post the permit. And, and perhaps the contractors should know that they'll be fined if they're not posting the, the permit. That's one thing. Then the, the number that residents can, can reach out to if they see some construction going on and they don't see a permit displayed. But I don't wanna hold this up in committee, so we're gonna pass it tonight on the motion. All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Motion presented by Counselor Serino that the mayor direct the superintendent of public works to place two "Welcome to Revere" signs along the Northern Strand Trail at both the Malden Line and the Sawgus Line on the trail, similar to the "Welcome to Revere" sign that is located on the, on the traffic island at the corner of Salem Street and Clifton Street in North Revere.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. I think that adding these signs "Welcome to Revere" would be a nice gesture, just kind of make it a little nicer and make it feel like a, you know, a part of our community for people who are traversing the bike trail from Everett all the way to Lynn. So I think it speaks for itself, and I hope that we can get these up. Thank you.
Any other counselors on the motion? All in favor, all opposed? So voted.
Calendar item number twenty-one, motion presented by Counselor Serino that the city council award Revere resident Alondra Enciso Torres a certificate of commendation for her extraordinary efforts in establishing the La Calabritiva Club at Malden Catholic High School last month. Alondra, a fifteen-year-old sophomore, started the extracurricular club at Malden Catholic on April eighth to serve families in need and to brainstorm means of helping the increasing number of families in the area experiencing homelessness due to the pandemic. The group has quickly become one of the largest clubs at Malden Catholic, with forty-five members who are engaged in coordinating with La Calabritiva based out of Chelsea to help offer resources and necessities to the vulnerable people in our area.
Counselor Serino.
Thank you, Mr. President. As an alumnus of Malden Catholic, I was very proud to read the Revere Journal article in, I believe it was about two weeks ago, that Alondra Enciso Torres, a Revere resident, founded this club, this extracurricular club at MC that's helping families throughout our area. And I think it goes back to the core values of Malden Catholic. And I, I'm proud, as, as I said, as an alum, I would love to be able to present this citation to her. So if we could schedule this to be presented at our next regularly scheduled meeting. But Madam Clerk, I will actually be going to Malden Catholic on Friday if I, if I could get the citation to present in person, and then Alondra will attend the next council meeting, and we can praise her there as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanna commend my colleague Counselor Serino for such a great motion. I've had the pleasure of getting to know this organization through my new role in representing the city of Revere and the city of Chelsea, and they do so much work for the community and provide so many services and resources. So for a fifteen-year-old to come up with the initiative to put something like this together to serve her community, it makes me so proud that she's from Revere. I, I just think it's a great motion, and I really commend Counselor Serino for pointing this out and for recognizing her. And we also did a citation for my office that he'll present Friday on our behalf as well. So this is just phenomenal, and, you know, I think more people in the community should aim to be like this and to, to be involved and to wanna make a difference in any way that they can. So at fifteen years old, I mean, I can't imagine where she's gonna be in the next fifteen years. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
I pass, Counselor. Move on.
Okay. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number twenty-two, late motion presented by Counselor Keefe that the mayor requests the city's Department of Public Health and COVID Response Operations to investigate the feasibility of acquiring software and training to assist youth residents and families dealing with pandemic-related mental and physical health issues.
Counselor Keefe.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I apologize for making this late. It's, it was stuck in my mailbox, but I did wanna bring some light to this. Obviously, we've all been dealing with a lot of, the whole city and the whole country and the world has been dealing with a lot of issues over the last thirteen to fourteen months. This last year has been extremely trying for a number of people, and I think the city's done a really great job of responding through the pandemic. We've dedicated a lot of time and resources towards wellness and relief, relief more often in the form of material needs and measurable needs to our community. Fight food, face masks, sanitizers, vaccination, shelter, and money. The underlying problems that are occurring with the grade of mental health amongst our youth population is skyrocketing. I know there's a few counselors on, on the board here with family, younger children, and they've seen it with their children's or their children's friends and people that are close to their lives. Mental health is, it's a ticking time bomb. There's no on or off switch. Many parents don't have the resources or support center around them to identify these signs, and unfortunately, more often, it's too late when they get the attention they deserve. Lasting mental health issues will go undiagnosed, undetected, and eventually untreated if we don't dedicate more resources towards addressing our, our youth. I feel very strongly about the butterfly effect. I think that kids especially, they can make one wrong turn at twelve, or fourteen, or ten, and it could alter their life dramatically, and I don't wanna see that happen. I've gotten so many calls over the last year with parents extremely concerned, but people with great households in our city, people with two parents, and their kids have had issues, their kids have had serious mental health issues because of the inability to live life normally, and some of the struggles that they've, they've had. And I, I was glad that I got a call earlier in the week from a woman named Jean Blake, who, there's a, there's a student, and I'm not gonna say the school, but there's an employee, a relative employee of mine with a student in our Revere public school system that's having some serious struggles. And fortunately, she's being treated and, and being, receiving treatment with some people that are affiliated with McLean and a, and a woman named Jean Blake. And she did, did let me know that there's some software, there's also some resources that they're able to offer, sometimes free and sometimes for a very minimal cost, because there, they, there's lots of grants and subsidies out there to help support the cities and towns and businesses that need this for their families. So I did forward this already along, in, in advance. I think the council would be supportive to the mayor to have him work on this. But, you know, we have to start taking a deeper look at what impacts on our youth, the youth in our city, what lasting impacts will happen because of the last thirteen months. So I just wanted to make sure that we brought some light to that, and I wanna let the residents of Revere know that your city will continue to work for you, and if you need help and if you don't know where to go, you know, reach out, reach out to us. We'll help get you the resources or get people in front of you, but do not try to go alone. And there's professionals that can help deal with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Rotundo.
I support this motion a hundred percent. Social isolation has caused so much problems among so many families, and whatever we can do to help them is of the highest priority. Dr. Gaba spoke about trauma and how it affects people in different ways and how people deal with it. Addiction, homelessness, all the things that Counselor Keefe spoke about, the mental health issues that our children face. If there's anything that we can do, it's support every effort to help our children. And I can tell you right now that there's not a family in this community that has not been touched because of an issue of isolation. Being locked down is a traumatic thing. Not seeing your friends as a child and socializing is a traumatic thing. So I support this a hundred percent, Patrick. And any effort that we can do as a community, we need to do it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you, Mr. President. And through you to the clerk, you know, this is a really great motion on behalf of Counselor Keefe, and it actually reminded me that May is actually Mental Health Awareness Month. And I know we're doing a lot in the state to recognize it and to talk about, you know, different options that are out there. So if I may, after this motion, I'd like to make an oral motion to declare May Mental Health Awareness Month in the city of Revere and, you know, work to publicize some resources that are out there and also help end the stigma for mental health. You know, I think that there is a stigma out there that people are afraid to ask for help, they make it a very personal thing, and they're afraid to talk about it, when at the end of the day, it's much more real and much more common than we all know. At some point in everyone's life, you know, one in five people struggle with a mental health issue, but in everyone's life, someone comes across a traumatic event that causes a mental health problem. So it's just important that we acknowledge it, and especially, I think, you know, the past twelve months have highlighted, you know, some of the darker times that we face as a community. So it's important that we recognize it and also offer the support. So I really commend you, Counselor Keefe, and would like to put that oral motion forward also. Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll second that oral motion.
Thank you. Let's finish this first motion first. Wow. I'm, I'm taking direction from Counselor Rotundo now. No, I wanted to, I wanted to say that this is a very important motion, and, and I appreciate you putting it in. It's, and I'm, I'm also happy that my colleague and, and the representative is gonna put in this other motion on Mental Health Awareness Month, but everybody has been touched by this pandemic, and unfortunately, a lot of young people have really been hurt badly. So on this motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Now I have to clean up some business because Counselor Serino's motion went without being voted in, and I wanted to say that that motion also touched me, and I, I can't believe that these young people are so resourceful and that, that really, so on Counselor Serino's motion, all in favor, all opposed? So voted. Now on-
On Counselor Janino's- -Counselor Janino's late motion that the city of Revere declare the month of May Mental Health Month in the city of Revere.
Can I be here, Counselor?
Point of personal privilege for Counselor Rotundo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sure you all will echo what I'm about to say, that in the city of Revere, we're trying to reach a vaccination rate of seventy percent, and I'm told that we're in the thirty percent range. It's not because we lack the vaccine, it's not because we lack the people to give the vaccine, it's because the people at home are not taking the opportunity to register and get vaccinated. The more people in our community that get vaccinated, it decreases the risk of other people getting the disease, COVID-19. But more importantly, it prevents you possibly, if you did get COVID-19, from having serious sequelae, meaning having really bad lung disease or other problems that go along with it. And unfortunately, like everybody on, on this committee and on this council, we know somebody who's been affected, someone who has died, a family member, a friend, and we don't want that to happen to you. So please, please. Mayor Rigo has done a fabulous job at trying to forward the cause of vaccinating everybody in the city of Revere. Please get vaccinated, if not for you, for your loved one. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I might mention that in my discussions with the mayor, it turns out that we're having some pop-up type vaccination sites where you can just come without an appointment, and those seem to be doing a lot better numbers than the actual appointment ones. So it's encouraging, and he, he tells me we're gonna have more of them. So it's, it's very encouraging that people are coming to those. Counselor Janino, point of personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to take a moment to end the meeting on a happy note and wish all the moms out there a very happy Mother's Day. This Sunday, May ninth, we'll celebrate Mother's Day, so I wanted to take a moment to acknowledge all the hard-working moms out there and wish them a very happy Mother's Day, especially my Grandma Joanne. Happy Mother's Day, Googie.
That's very nice. Okay, no further business. We're adjourned until May seventeenth.